Welcome, everyone, to the City Council Planning, Development, and Environment Committee meeting. I am Councilmember Hunt, and I am here tonight with Council President Walsh and Councilmember Hall. And there will be multiple public comments opportunities at tonight's meeting. We also have multiple agenda items, at which point you can comment after those agenda items. And we will start, as well, with public comment opportunity. If there are any members of the public that are wishing to speak, I can read some additional guidelines. And there are, okay. All right. Members of the public may address council at this time, in person or virtually. Those who are signed up in advance to make comments will be called on first. If you are joining us virtually and would like to make comments, please raise your virtual hand. If you are on the phone, please press star three. If you have joined by computer or smartphone, please look for the hand icon. This varies by device. One option may be in the participant panel. Additionally, public comments are an important part of the public process. We take them seriously and factor them into the decisions we make. During audience comments, members of the public are invited to address the council regarding matters that are directly related to city programs, projects, services, or events, except public hearing items, quasi-judicial items, or campaign-related matters. And with that, I will check in with the city clerk if anyone has signed up to speak.
We don't have anyone attending virtually from the public, but Connie Marsh in the room would like to make comments.
All right, welcome, Connie.
So I am going to waste a little bit of my five minutes saying, I spent 10 days in San Francisco editing the comp plan on my smartphone because we had no computer down there and I was stranded. So if you guys think you were in pain, I was in more pain. Thought you would like that. So I'm also super confused on, and I'm going to put process stuff here. This whole middle housing, as it is loosely talked about in the comp plan and then talked about in a different way in the DEIS, I think about it in yet another way because it's a rezone. And the rezone, which we don't define in Title 18, but it is, the colloquial definition is changing a zone or what is allowed in a zone. And that is exactly what we're doing, yet we are not processing this as a rezone. You have a good example of a rezone in this packet, and that is what a rezone looks like, where particular areas are called out and the public is told, we are going to change something here. And then they can speak to that. And instead, this process is sort of threading through, I don't know how many pages, a lot. So nobody really understands. And using the term "missing middle," most of the world has no idea what anyone's talking about. So I object to that process. I don't think it is correct after reading the code today. Interestingly, SEPA was also changed in all of these state rules, and the SEPA process is now in labyrinth-like language, allowing categorical exemptions for housing, missing middle, middle-style housing regulations. And so the city could, I'm not saying you will, but I think you could use a categorical exemption, saying, we have analyzed the SEPA via the draft EIS, and that is all we have to do. And I just sort of want to head that off at the pass because we nowhere near have the detail that we need to make those assumptions. And our utilities, both in the chapter and in the draft EIS, don't even discuss the potential impacts for middle housing. So I'm going to stop there, and I'm going to try to stay, but I may fall off my chair and have to go home. Thanks.
Thank you, Connie. Clerk Geezer, do we have any other members of the public online that would like to make comments?
No members of the public online.
Right, thank you. And I will note there are no other members of the public in the audience that would like to make a comment at this time. So we will move to the approval of the minutes. We have minutes from the July 9 meeting of this committee. I will note there is a small typo that is, should be the word "big." And I also noticed and would like to make a suggestion that one of the other things that we discussed in that meeting was that we, as the committee, recommended that the city not have specific requirements in code for the aesthetic screening around heat pumps because we were trying to incentivize that. I actually reported out on that in my report to the council after that meeting, and it wasn't in the meeting minutes. And so I wanted to suggest that as an addition, also because we recommended this go on consent, and so it would go straight on consent. And so I just wanted to make sure that was captured in the minutes. Does that sound good? Okay. Is that, is that clear as one addition for the minutes?
Councilmember Hunt, which item would that be in addition to?
It is on the Title 18 item.
Perfect. Yes, we can add that phrase.
Yes, so on Title 18, that's one additional thing that we discussed. Yeah, anything else? Okay. Yeah, sorry, Title 18 and Title 3, comm. 0061. Okay. Any, any other corrections or edits to that meeting minutes? Okay. Then, all those who approve, please say aye.
Aye.
Those meeting minutes are approved, and we will go to our first item of business, which is comm. 0015, Comprehensive Plan Periodic Update. And this will be presented by Stephen Padua. Stephen, welcome.
Thank you, Chair Hunt. Evening, committee members. Today, I'm going to walk through the, a summary of the draft comprehensive plan and periodic amendments. Tonight, the purpose is to provide a presentation on the summary of changes with the intent of supporting the deliberations at your October 1 meeting with the Planning Policy Commission's recommendations, which will be deliberated later this week. Just a little background information, because it's been a while since we've talked about comprehensive plan. The Growth Management Act in Washington State requires that all planning cities and counties have a comprehensive plan established to address several topic areas, that being concentrated urban growth, transportation, housing, and conservation in open space. A lot of what influences what goes into comprehensive plan trickles down from the state, going to regional requirements, as well as into countywide requirements in the countywide planning policies. For the city of Issaquah, the comprehensive plan influences all levels of planning that we're calling the planning framework, that goes into the functional plans, that looks at the implementation of those goals and policies, and then financing implementation, that being the city budget or even city code, as well as city services. And then, in this cycle of looking at performance metrics to see how we're doing, and then we relook at everything. The idea is that we are planning and monitoring everything we're doing as we're going through implementation. With our periodic update for this year, we had three big focus areas. The first being compliance with state, regional, and countywide requirements for the comprehensive plan. We needed to work with all three levels of staff agencies to review each of the elements to ensure that we are in compliance with what's being asked of the city of Issaquah. That has influenced much of the elements that are being proposed tonight. Land use and sustainability, this is the same similar element focused on land use and sustainability, but focused more on the built environment. When House Bill 1181 was adopted by the state, that asked, or is now requiring all cities to plan for climate, to address climate, to address climate change and climate vulnerabilities, or that we created the Environment and Climate Stewardship Element. And that incorporates a lot of the natural environment goals and policies that were created with the Climate Action Plan, as well as some new policies that were discussed with the Environmental Board. The housing element was updated in compliance with House Bill 1110, House Bill 1220, and House Bill 1337, all focused on transitional emergency housing, middle housing, as well as the need for beds for people experiencing homelessness. The human services element was updated to ensure that it was aligned with the recently adopted Human Services Strategic Plan. The parks element was updated to align with the recently developed draft park system plan. Economic fatality element was updated in coordination with the development of the Economic Development Action Plan. The arts and culture element was updated as part of the first phase of developing their first arts and culture strategic plan. And the transportation element was updated with, in coordination with the transit study, which focused on new and enhanced goals and policies focused on transit. The transit study, as just a quick reminder, the transit study focused on providing updates to the goals and policies for the comprehensive plan. It also provided updates to the capital improvement program, so transit-specific projects. It also included updates to the mobility plan. And then, the utilities, public services, capital facilities element was merged into one element so that we could reduce a lot of the redundancy and confusion around level of service standards, which are now in one element rather than in two separate elements. And that, that merged element is in alignment with all the city's utility system plans. So the only plan that I didn't mention in coordination for the periodic update was the development of the urban forestry plan, and so we've been working with park staff to ensure that the policies that are going into the comprehensive plan is in alignment with what's going into the urban forestry plan as well. The last piece of what went into the periodic update was focused on design. So we wanted to ensure that the comprehensive plan was going to be in an accessible location that people are able to use, but also integrate within the city website. So we're planning to put it on the Code Publishing Platform with the city code. And this allows us to be able to create direct links between the city code, as well, between the comprehensive plan. And so we'll actually have better search functions to find how the city's plans align with what's going into the city code. The last piece is metrics. The guiding principles from the strategic plan were introduced with the comprehensive plan with the intent of showing the relationship what, of what is in the comprehensive plan and strategic plan, and we'll continue a lot of those conversations with the upcoming strategic plan update. So as a general summary for the changes for the periodic update, we updated a lot of goals and policies in alignment with many of the state requirements with the bills I listed before. We also incorporated diversity, equity, inclusion, a lot of goals and policies throughout the comprehensive plan, to ensure that that is actually being addressed and integrated in the goals and policies in the comprehensive plan and not just listed in any particular area. And this was discussed with the Equity Board early on in our periodic update process, to ensure the approach was consistent with how they see the city updating much of its plans. The functional plan integration coordination was worked with all the department staffs that are responsible for each of their own functional plans, to ensure that what we have in the comprehensive plan is in alignment with how they see implementation following through with their functional plans. We are formally establishing neighborhoods in the comprehensive plan, which wasn't that before. It was originally recognized as subareas, so now we are formally introducing neighborhoods. We created the Environment, Climate Stewardship Element, and we have the redesignation rezone of the City Hall Northwest property. So really quickly, we're the redesignation rezone, the hearing examiner reviewed this earlier this summer, and they are recommending the rezone of the City Hall Northwest property from community facilities, facilities, to urban core, and the redesignation of land use from community facilities to mixed use. In your materials tonight, we have the public comment matrix, the matrix of changes, which includes all the changes since all the council committees have reviewed the elements since earlier this year. We also have a letter from the Environmental Board, a letter from the King County Affordable Housing Committee, a list and links to all the meetings that would have been part of the periodic update, the summary of decision for the City Hall Northwest rezone, all the draft elements updated, the latest draft elements updated for your materials, and the appendices containing all the analysis that went into the periodic update. Next steps for this process is to return to this committee on October 1 to continue the conversation for your deliberation, go to the Committee of the Whole on November, and then go to full city council in early December for tentative adoption of the comprehensive So the administration's recommendation tonight is for us to return and continue the conversation on the draft comprehensive plan on October 1. Now I'm available for any questions from the committee.
Council President Walsh.
Let me ask just a starting question of how deep do you want to go? Because, as you said, it's also going back to PPC and then back to us. So are you looking for feedback that is meant to contribute to PPC's conversation, or things that we've seen on this first review?
We primarily just wanted to have the conversation with you to help explain all the changes that went into the comprehensive plan. We didn't want to start the conversation of any new changes until we have the Planning Policy Commission recommendations first, just so we're not recommending changes that they potentially might also discuss changes to. So we wanted to save that discussion for the October 1 meeting. So for tonight, we're hoping to answer any questions that you may have on any of the changes that went into the elements. I can bring up the slides if anything was confusing on what changed in the comprehensive plan since you last saw any of the elements. I'm also happy to discuss any of the other elements that were reviewed by the other council committees.
Okay. Go ahead. Well, I wanted to add, I had the same question and had a conversation with City Administrator Bob Quitz earlier today, and one additional thing that we discussed was making sure that we put any sort of questions or asks on the table so that those materials come back to us. So if we have a specific way that we would like information, or a specific matrix, that sort of thing, that that would come back at that October meeting. So sort of making sure that we have that information to make a final recommendation in the October meeting.
Great, yeah. I mean, there's certain things in here that I certainly glommed onto in a reading, but I guess my main question is, now that we have the draft EIS, how does that influence? And I'm unfamiliar with the idea that we basically studied three options, but we aren't choosing a preferred alternative. So how then do you interpret, you know, I'm also coming from the Affordable Housing Committee, and obviously, there's a lot of conversation about the distribution of housing need. So how do we interpret our housing targets compared to the alternatives studied, compared to what our targets that are set are? And is there, is it comfortable to not have a preferred alternative, or would it be better to take action on that?
I'll ask Mandy to chime in if I miss anything on my response, but for, and we'll talk about this in the presentation when we go over the draft EIS as well. But for the analysis for the draft EIS, it's more, it is more supplementary to the comprehensive plan in terms of looking at those different growth alternatives to see if there are any impacts that might influence policy changes for the draft comprehensive plan. And so we look at the level of service standards, we look at those different growth alternatives to determine if, at any point, we need to consider changing zoning. And that's when you would actually want a preferred alternative, is if we were proposing some type of zoning changes to accommodate growth in certain areas of the city. And what we figured out through the draft EIS, or the analysis that went into the draft EIS, is we don't need to pose any zoning changes, and there is no need for a preferred alternative because of that.
Okay, yeah, very much appreciate that because that seemed to be, you know, kind of an open concept in the background and trying to understand why that, you know, why we don't have a preferred alternative, but also how that influences the content of the comprehensive plan. Thanks.
So we do have the Environmental Board comment letter, and then the Affordable Housing Committee Is, so are either of those addressed yet, or are those in the works to be addressed? And how do you track which comments are addressed or not so far?
So attached to the Environmental Board letter, we have a spreadsheet that goes through staff responses. And so where we felt changes were needed, we incorporated that into the drafts and into the version sets in your packet tonight. For what we felt didn't need to be changes into the comprehensive plan, or already addressed in the draft elements, we didn't incorporate any additional changes. For the Affordable Housing Committee, all of their recommendations are actually addressed in the draft elements tonight. And so we incorporated, many of the missing pieces of information are now added into the draft housing element, as well as the appendices. And then we incorporated two new policies. One focused on coordination with sound transit to plan for light rail, and the other one prioritizing 0 to 30% AMI. And so those were the two very specific policy recommendations that came from AHC. Everything else was just missing information that we added into the elements.
Okay, so the, the AHC changes are in the public comments matrix, or how are those tracked?
We have, we put together basically a response to the AHC staff that we had sent them. It's not in the materials, but we can add that to the materials to make sure that's clear that those are addressed. We did put in the staff report each of those recommendations, and just a general statement that we have addressed them all with the draft elements.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Hall.
Did I read the memo wrong, I thought, for the Affordable Housing Committee letter? It said something like, almost all of them were included, but two were going to be folded into the update of the Housing Strategy Work Plan. Is that right?
The last piece of their recommendations was engagement on the specific housing strategies. That will actually be incorporated when we update the city's Housing Strategy Work Plan. And so because we don't have any strategies specifically in the comprehensive plan, that's a recommendation that'll be fit with the Housing Strategy Work Plan update.
Just kind of a fun, well, not fun question. I just, I, when did we, and totally, I totally could have just missed it, but when did we start calling the Green Necklace creeks the peaks? I mean, it's nice, I just didn't know that.
The change in the name was introduced with the update, or the Park System Plan draft release earlier this year.
Correct.
Which has not been yet adopted by the council. So, and everything's still draft phases. If, if it, if it doesn't change, we will change everything back as part of the comprehensive plan, but we want to make sure our language was still consistent.
Do we have any other questions at this point? No? Okay. Then at this point, I will check in if we have any members of the public that would like to comment on this item. And I'll also check with Clerk Geezer. Okay, I'm seeing that Clerk Geezer is saying that, indicating there are no members of the public online, so Connie, if you would like to, go ahead.
All right. So I've been through maybe a really big one of these, and two modest of these, and through several community-wide comprehensive plan, community gathering sessions that took six months, and the city staff went out to the community, and they said, this is your town, and we're looking 20 years in advance. We want to hear your hopes and dreams for the city of Issaquah in 20 years because it's your town, and you live here. And it's our job to make a plan for what the community wants. And as you heard, this isn't about the community this time. The community has been stripped out, and instead, it's based on strategic plans, which I have told you several times, strategic plans are down here, your comprehensive plan is up here with your visions, and then your community values. And so it's breaking my heart to feel like what is supposed to be our community's soul going into the future is being stripped down into how do we run our business and what do we do next in the city, because that's not my town, right? My town is hopes and dreams, and people living here and living there every day, and wanting that every day to be great. And we didn't even tap on that. We didn't even try. And I'm told that that was set early on, and here we are. And so there are a few places where that can be changed. I would ask for community values to be returned to the introduction section so that the community's beings can exist in this plan. The treasures now, if you recall, the treasures, which need to be updated, but in '93, the city council said, we are going to use these community treasures to guide the comprehensive plan through the future. They have been removed from the introduction, and they are relegated into the history section as a, we need to consider the treasures, and that's it. No overarching soul in this plan. But if you invite that language back, and instead, you use the guidance of our vision, which isn't bad, and our mission, which is okay, we can regain some of the soul in this because some of the language is good. A lot of it is just the strategic plan language awkwardly shoved into the comprehensive plan. It's already elsewhere, it doesn't need to be there. And in some places, we talk about the width of a trail, which is code. So, okay, that diatribe, which I've been waiting to do, I'm done. Now, ah, there are some weird things about level of service because, say, we want to maintain them, but our parks level of service is not in the parks, in the comprehensive plan, it's not, because parks is in the services and utility section, and then they have their own element. And so the services section directs it to the parks element section, no LOS. But in the draft EIS, there is one level of service. When you go to outside to the park strategic plan, they have two level of service standards in the park strategic, new one, we're talking the new one, but neither of them says, okay, this is how we want, we want our parks to function. Boom, we want this level of service. Neither of them say that. And so there's no analysis then saying, and from that, we are going to build capital projects that will ensure that we either maintain or get to those goals from those new projects, and we are keeping our level of service. And with that, that type of analysis, it's hard for me to think that we are creating a park system where we know where we're going and we have a plan to get there. And that's what a level of service is for. And so when we talk about, we, we looked at our level of service so that we can understand our impacts, we actually haven't done that, and we need to do that because that's part of planning. And then I already sent you an email about the transportation, where we've basically just adopted our entire transportation hopes and dreams of, I don't know how many, hundreds of millions of dollars, and said, this is what we need to get to, level of service D. So if you would talk about that, that, next time, when you can actually talk, that'd be great.
Thank you, Connie. All right. So I think our task is to provide high-level guidance on what kind of information we need at our next touch with this after it's gone to our volunteer commissions, make sure we have the information we need to make a recommendation on this item when it comes back in October. Would either of you like to start off? Would either of you like to start off? Or I can, I can start us off? Okay. When I was reading the matrix, which is Exhibit B, I, I find that helpful in general. I think that what would be great when this comes back to the committee is if all of the changes are either in the matrix or in a tract changes document. Because right now, we have some changes that are highlighted in red, some changes that are not highlighted in that matrix. And then there's also another attachment with the environmental letter that, that has some other changes. And then I wasn't really sure if the recommend, or if the suggestions from the affordable housing commission were the final recommendations or if that was kind of more of a general, you know, we need to put these policies here because they seemed very high-level to me. For example, the one about making sure that we're prioritizing policies for zero to 30% AMI individuals says something to the effect of, you know, explore and support policies that, that address the needs of zero to 30% AMI individuals. And so I think, you know, looking to the future, when there are policymakers and when there are community members who are looking at this document, having more, having more policy language around those items would be good, as well as making sure that we are addressing the intent of those recommendations. I thought they were great recommendations, and I just want to make sure that we are taking those and really incorporating that feedback. I think there are also some, maybe I'm, maybe I'm mistaken, but I think there are some issues with the matrix currently, like the vision in the previous draft and in the new revised draft is the same. And I read it a couple of times, and I'm sure it's the same. So I think, I think it's meant to track a change from an earlier draft potentially, but it basically wasn't clear to me what change we were trying to highlight. And sort of similarly with some other sections where it seems like we were trying to highlight a difference, but not everything was tracked. So consistency would help. I think there's a lot of good content that is being, that was provided, you know, good feedback that was provided by our volunteer commissions already, as well as the affordable housing council. And so I want to make sure that we're tracking those and that when that comes back to our committee, that we can make sure that we're fully understanding what changes were made and why. That's my, my highest level feedback. Additionally, I think because this has gone through many versions, and this is something that I've seen in other periodic updates, there's sometimes sort of long sentences or sentences that it seems like something has been incorporated after the fact. And so I think just some looking at it with fresh eyes and making sure that the sentences and that, that we're really getting the main points across would be good. I have a few specific examples that I can share. But I think, you know, that would, that would help a lot just with the readability and with the future use of the document. And then additionally, sometimes there is, there is very high-level definitions, as well as the sort of Issaquah examples of definitions for things like climate change. And I think it does a great job going into, this is what we're doing to reduce emissions. This is what we're doing to address the current impacts of climate change. And this is what we're doing for future impacts. I think that similarly, if we can make sure that we're always tying back to the Issaquah-specific things that we are planning in the comprehensive plan, I think that'd be good. Because some of the definitions for things like equity are good, but I would also like to make sure that we're tying that back to the Issaquah-specific policies and examples that we're, we're focusing on. My feedback. Anybody else like to give feedback? Councilmember Hall?
Yeah, thank you. And thanks for, I think it's nice that we get to kind of have a meeting where we digest kind of the process and understanding how you're going about it before PPC touches it and then comes back to us next month. So that's nice. I agree with everything the chair pointed out. I also saw that the vision statement looked the same on the matrix. Similarly, one of my requests would be if we could get some information about how we described community values and envisioning in the current comp plan, just so I can have a little bit more, better judgment of comparing how we're describing that now versus then would be good. So if that can be included in future info, that would be really helpful. And then how possible do you think it is to have like a comprehensive, no pun intended, tract changes document? Probably, do you think impossible because so many things have moved? Or do you think that, like, how helpful do you think that would be?
We had the, so when we had the tract changes, we had tract changes basically given to all the council committees earlier this year. So we're just going to combine them all.
All right, cool. Then yeah, it would be good to have a big document with all that as well. And other than that, I agree with everything that was said, and I look forward to the discussion in October. Thank you very much for giving us the letter from the environmental board and getting their feedback. I thought all the comments that they had were addressed appropriately, read through their matrix. So I appreciate that. And again, for all the work that you and everyone else has touched for the comprehensive plan, I just really appreciate it. Seems like it's been an absolutely massive lift. So I appreciate you.
Council President Walsh?
Thanks. So first of all, I appreciate that you both were looking at the affordable housing committee's letter and everything. That is useful. And I'm glad to see that we have brought in some of those or all of those recommendations. I agree, it would be nice to be able to track that in a central document. So I think that would be great. With the environmental board's letter, I mean, I felt the passion of that. I felt the, hey, we want to see more of this. I also read the, the staff response matrix, and I, I understand that, but I still feel a tension there of what, just because we have technically, you know, handled those areas. It just, it still feels like there's a tension there in the concepts of both environmental and climate and making sure that that comes across as the spirit of Issaquah, not just in, and maybe a better way or a different way to address that would be rather than in, say, specific policy language, making sure that that really comes through in the introductory area so that we're really talking about how important that is for Issaquah. Obviously, if any of the policy-specific language works, I appreciate that as well. But I still feel that, that tension with the letter and how that responds there. In general, I'm kind of liking what I'm seeing. I like that, you know, in the land use element, we've got a nice vision there. And it kind of guides me through the story in some ways. I feel like that's missing in the introduction concept. Something that says, here we are, why are we here, and where are we going? Looking back historically at the previous comprehensive plan, the introduction had a section on creating a sustainable Issaquah, how the comprehensive plan establishes the vision and manages growth, public participation, scroll down, and then gets into the format and language. It feels like some of that context and visioning and storytelling, I think, is missing here. And I think that's an important concept, especially when, you know, as Connie says, there's a lot of things coming down from the state. And so being able to recognize that as part of our context and talk about, you know, here's, here's some of the larger changes that you'll see in this comprehensive plan. I feel like that piece of the story is a little bit missing, whether that comes in the full introduction or in each of the element introductions. I just want to make sure that we are able to tell that story so that it isn't just a dry policy document. Because, man, the policy language is really, really important, and I understand that. But so is just the concept of where we're at and where we're going. And I'm trying to think if there is anything else. Has planning policy, or what are your thoughts on the, like, streams to peaks versus the green necklace concept and making the update now versus after we have adopted the park strategic plan? And are there any other areas like that where we're going off of something that's a draft plan rather than the finalized version? Urban forestry?
The urban forestry is the only, I wouldn't say draft plan that's in motion right now. Everything else has already been adopted. And we, we made the change from, to creeks to peaks from green necklace, primarily because that was the policies that were being integrated into the park system plan. We, we tried to change a lot of the policies to more, say, parks planning documents rather than being too specific. So we already made some of those changes with the expectation that maybe it might change. But we, we weren't sure when the park system plan was going to be, and we didn't want to get it folded into the 2025 comp plan update. So we'd have to wait a whole year to change those policies.
With that, does the committee have a preference? The park plan, we've just moved it today to be considered by Services Safety and Parks at their meeting in October. So it will be before the full council, then either in late October, the first part of November.
I, I think that because the comprehensive plan is something that we only update every, every few years and, or, you know, with the big update, I think it's appropriate to make sure that we're incorporating things like the urban forestry plan and things that are currently in flight. Right? The last periodic update was 2015, I think.
2015. And the next one will be 10 years from now. So we tried to be as general as possible with a lot of those ones, for plans that are in motion, plans that aren't even started yet. So with the expectation of not being able to touch it again until then.
Yeah. So I think that especially things that are, plans that have gone through a fair amount of the process, they're, they're in flight. We can reference those and make sure that they're included in the comp plan. That's my preference. Looks like we have some nods, so, okay. You have any additional comments?
I guess I would just say, I really appreciate the staff memo in giving some of the story around why things changed. And I just want to make sure that comes to the full council as we're kind of talking about the bigger concept. And maybe even some of those are some of that story piece. I mean, none of that is the emotions and the feeling behind why we're here. But some of it is the, the context that I think is important, so.
I have a few more comments. So I, I had also pulled the section of the environmental board letter that talks about that there, it says that the sections on environment, sustainability, land use, housing, and equity are currently inconsistent and confusing, which undermines the clarity of the city's goals and vision. I think that partly that is because they aren't reflecting all of the same wording and all of the same language. And I think also that especially the land use section could be strengthened in terms of connecting back to the environment and to the, the climate goals and, and the equity goals. I, I do, so that did resonate with me. They do feel like they're moving separately. However, I also know that they're all under, they're all in the process of being updated. But I did want to agree with that. And so I think that making sure that they, those different sections are referencing each other and are consistent with each other is important. They also, the environmental board also pointed out that the projection, or they said the projection of only 5,000 people for population growth over the next 20 years seems unrealistic. This gets back to Council President Walsh, Council President Walsh's earlier comment, I think, about, you know, are we saying that we expect there to be one of these scenarios? Or what is the implication from having that scenario here? And so I think that wasn't clear to this committee. That wasn't clear to us as a committee who has, is very, very much in the weeds here. And so I think just making sure that that's really clear. What are the implications of these different population scenarios? You know, are we saying that we expect this? Or are we saying these are the different things that we're planning for? And under these different scenarios, these are the outcomes. And just making all of that really clear, I think, would be good. Because that is a high level. That is a high level factor in all of this analysis, I think, how, what kind of population growth we expect over the next 10 to 20 years. Have any additional comments? Okay. So to recap, we would like both a matrix with all of the, when this returns to our committee, we would like please a matrix with all of the changes and why they were changed, and the complete, the complete change. Additionally, if we can have the full tract changes document itself, that would also be helpful for us. And we also had several comments on where the kinds of edits that we think would be helpful, especially in the introduction and having a stronger overarching vision and more of the storytelling element that sets you up for why we have these different policies. And additionally, I think that some of the policy language, especially where we are reacting to things like the affordable housing commission's comments could be more specific and more strengthened. We have, did I miss anything? Do we have anything additional at this point? Okay. Do you have what you need from this committee for returning in October?
We do.
Okay. Great. Then that concludes our first item. Our second item is comm 0071, comprehensive plan draft environmental impact statement. And this will be presented by Principal Planner Mandy Roberts. Welcome, Mandy.
Thank you. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can hear you.
Very good. And do you see the presentation on screen?
We do.
We do. Okay, great. Thank you so much. Well, it's great to be with you this evening. Thank you very much. My objective is to give you a brief overview of the draft environmental impact statement that has been prepared to support the comprehensive plan update. And that DEIS is currently open for public and agency review at this time. So the purpose is really for, for me to present some of the high-level aspects of the EIS process and provide a staff's update of that work. As I'm sure you're well aware, the State Environmental Policy Act process identifies and analyzes environmental impact associated with government, projects, or decisions. And in this case, we're talking about the comprehensive plan update as our proposed action. It is a non-project action, or sometimes we also call, call that programmatic. And the objectives of CIPA in this case are to identify and mitigate potential impact that could occur as a result of adopting the comprehensive plan and the resulting growth. And also, another key objective is to provide the opportunity for public and agency review and comment on the DEIS. So we followed the procedures for CIPA very closely in that we analyzed a potential in that we analyzed a potential reasonable range of alternatives and associated potential impacts. We identified mitigation measures to avoid or reduce the level of potential impacts of those alternatives, actual alternatives. We are providing opportunities for public, local, state and federal agencies and tribal governments to review and comment. And as I already mentioned, this is a non-project action programmatic, and so we follow the category associated with that. Our draft EIS includes the typical sections that you see, fact sheet, introduction section, a chapter introducing the alternatives. And then the main subject matter of the draft EIS is are the technical chapters that provide a discussion of the affected environment, the analysis of alternatives within each of those topical areas, potential impacts that could occur, and then mitigation measures to reduce or eliminate significant unavoidable adverse impacts. So there's a 30 day comment period. We are within that comment period now. We are holding a public hearing later this week to gather additional comments. And once the comments are received, a final EIS is prepared to issue. And as we've been discussing earlier tonight, one thing that is perhaps a little different about this EIS is we have not identified a preferred alternative. The purposes of this EIS are really to support the long term planning of Issaquah and to be prepared for growth that is already approved through your development regulations and zoning at different levels, different levels of intensity and pace that could occur in the future. And to just be proactive so that the city knows that a growth happens at a faster pace. These are the types of mitigation measures that would be required to address that. If it happens at a more moderate pace, these are the mitigation measures that would be required. So there's not really a need to select a preferred alternative because, as Stephen mentioned earlier, we don't need to change zoning. It's already in place. But we do want to understand what the implications would be if growth happened at a different pace in the community. So it's really being proactive, thinking ahead, making sure the city is is well aware and ready for that growth in the future. So the the EIS itself does not require adoption. It is supplementary to the conference of plan, which will be adopted. The final EIS is issued and it needs to be issued about at least seven days before the conference plan is adopted. Here are the technical topics that are analyzed in the built EIS. As I mentioned, we have some information about demographics, growth, housing needs. We have a summary of the alternatives. We have a very thorough understanding of consistency with plans and policies. That includes state, regional, county and city plans and policies, by the way. We've got a chapter that looks at land use, built form and housing implementation, transportation, public services, utilities, community design, aesthetics and natural environment. So here are the three alternatives that we've studied. And CIPA always requires that we look at a no action alternative. In other words, what would be the implications and potential effect of not taking action? This no action alternative, alternative one assumes that growth would continue, of course. And existing projects would continue. But we wouldn't have the benefit of having a comprehensive plan that fully aligns with all of the state, regional, county and local plans and policies, which is really important to make sure that we have that consistent consistency across planning. So then the two action alternatives that we looked at, alternative two and alternative three, are just different levels of intensity of growth. So alternative two is really a more moderate level of growth. And it also assumes a more dispersed pattern of growth across the city. Whereas alternative three assumes a more intensive growth. In other words, growth is happening at a faster pace and more growth is happening. But alternative three also assumes there's more of a focus of growth in central Issaquah because there certainly is the capacity for that to happen and the central Issaquah plan calls for that. And so it really makes sense, a lot of sense, and it's a smart growth approach for the city to look at. How how can we intensify growth in central Issaquah where more people have access to services, utilities, transportation, ultimately light rail transit, as you mentioned earlier? So analyzing alternative three gives us the opportunity to point those positive aspects out. This chart gives you a sense of our targets for housing units and employment or jobs. And the targets are, as you know, set by the county based on a process that's really influenced by regional planning, state numbers that are tracked through the Office of Financial Management. So trends in growth as well as each community's zone to capacity. And so for Issaquah, your target for 2044 in 20 years from now is to increase housing units by 3,500 above 2019 levels, which you've already increased them to some extent. You can see the difference there in the left hand columns where in 2019, you had 17,471 housing units. And in 2022, you had 18,000. So your total net new need or net new target, excuse me, is 2,427 houses. You have the current zone capacity for housing units in the city of 12,862. So you have way more zone capacity than the targets are calling for. And that's another reason, frankly, why we wanted to analyze potentially more growth. Again, to proactively help the city understand what if more growth were to occur, it is allowed in our league and what types of mitigation measures and capital improvements would be needed to serve that growth. And similar information for numbers of jobs below, again, you have a lot more zone capacity for jobs than your targets indicate you need to provide.
Can I pause and ask a question here? So every time we talk about the comprehensive plan, I think it's helpful to review what target means in this context. So I wondered if you could explain that, you know, is it a target we're trying to hit or not? And if not, if you could just explain that.
Yes, all that's yeah, all that's am I is there some feedback happening or are you able to hear me pretty quickly?
We're able to hear you. I think there might be a little bit of a delay, but we can hear you fine.
Great. All right. So the Department of Commerce administers the process of making sure that your comprehensive plan is consistently providing for your growth targets. Also, King County pays attention and Pudsey County Regional Council, they're also paying attention. What's required is that you simply have the zone to capacity to allow for that be housing units and that be jobs to occur. You do not actually have to have those housing units and jobs be implemented within that 20 years, but you just have to show that you have the capacity for that to happen if it should happen. Does that help answer the question here?
Yes, thank you. And so we and we have the capacity in both instances, as you showed on the previous line.
You do, yeah. We also, just to kind of provide a diverse level of analysis, we also under alternative one, we analyzed a little bit slower growth or less intensive growth. That's really more in line with your targets. But as you mentioned earlier, I think you were saying the environmental board was really concerned. They said something about 5,000 population growth, that that may not be realistic. And so again, sort of underscores the need to be more proactive and think of the potential for more intensive growth if it were to happen because it is allowed. So that's that's really what we looked at under alternatives two and three. And then this just shows you, this diagram or map shows you where we assumed different housing units and jobs would occur. Splitting out growth between the villages, central Issaquah and then the remaining areas of Issaquah. Because the villages still have quite a good capacity as does central Issaquah. The remaining areas of Issaquah have less capacity. So we wanted to make sure our analysis was consistent with those assumptions. And so you could see that alternative two looks at more housing units and jobs. In particular, more jobs in the central Issaquah area, which you would expect because there is more commercial office mixed use zoning in central Issaquah to support those jobs. And then finally, alternative three looks at the highest level of housing units and jobs across the city with more with a higher proportion of growth happening in central Issaquah. And so there's a there's a lot to the draft EIS analysis that hopefully you've had a chance to look through and see that analysis results. This is a very quick chart to just give you kind of the in a nutshell, version of what the alternative analysis shows. So so basically, under any of the alternatives, mitigation measures would ensure that significant unavoidable adverse impacts could be avoided. The the only issue really is under alternative one, without the adoption of the conference of plan, you would not be in alignment or consistent with state, regional, county and city plans and policies. And that is considered to be a significant adverse impact. So that's not surprising that that we would see that under alternative one. Under alternative three, the analysis at a programmatic level is showing that in many instances, there are efficiencies in infrastructure, cost, operations, management, a lot of different areas to concentrating growth in central Issaquah. And that mitigation measures can be delivered more efficiently as well. So that proves to be the case with the transportation analysis, with the utilities analysis, with public services and the public service providers that we consulted with. So it's, you know, it's just showing that the city can should continue to work towards implementing the central Issaquah plan and focusing it as much growth as possible in central Issaquah. Also, it the EIS points out that there are design standards in place in in to kind of cover that growth with with the more recent design standards adopted. So this is really in a nutshell chart and showing that impacts can be mitigated to the extent needed to avoid significant adverse. So as I mentioned, we do have a public hearing Thursday evening. And maybe Stephen can elaborate a little bit on the timing of that because I don't have that memorized. Do you want to do that now, Stephen, or after I speak?
Yes, I can do that. So for the next steps for the draft EIS, we'll have the public hearing with PPC this Thursday. The intent for the public hearing is not for have PPC have deliberation, but primarily five of formal public forum for public comment for the draft EIS. The public comment period closes on September 23rd. And then we'll tentative issuance of the final EIS depending on the comments that we receive was planned for September 27th or soon after following, depending on the level of comments that we need to address. And then the full comprehensive plan is tentative adopted December 2nd.
Copy the standard. Any further questions?
Okay, great. I do have a couple of questions. So the first one is on the timeline. We have a issuance and then we have comprehensive plan adoption by council. So I if council were to have edits to or concerns about the presentation of the EIS after that was issued, is there is there any opportunity for feedback from the full council on this? Or is this basically going to our committee and then getting issued and then it is is done and goes to full council?
The intent is primarily just to finish the analysis. There's no containment of policies. It uses all the same level of services that are established in the draft comprehensive plan. So if there's changes to be made, it'll probably be to the draft comprehensive plan and not to the draft EIS. Because the EIS is just primarily just looking at the growth alternatives to support the three different growth alternatives. But yes, the intent is to go to update the committee on how the draft EIS, what the results were for the draft EIS and then to continue the conversation on the draft comprehensive plan.
Okay, so if the full committee or full council, rather, were to weigh in that we do have the central Issaquah plan and we therefore the the more the the projection that is more aligned with that plan is alternative three and wanting to indicate that you could, we could indicate that in the comprehensive plan and that wouldn't be in the the environmental impact statement.
Correct.
Okay. Thank you. And then if you can go back to the chart of analysis, it's a few slides back. Okay.
This one?
Yes, this one. So I'm wondering how you are thinking about, for example, the second one where it says provides capacity for housing at needed income levels. And then it says, yes, even if we didn't adopt the updates to the comprehensive plan. And the reason for my question is we just had a conversation about, you know, wanting to make sure that we were updating the housing elements to make sure that we are addressing the needed income levels. So if you could, if you could just explain some of how you're how you're thinking about this, especially with the not adopted comp plan.
Yeah. Yes, so you are still, even if you don't adopt your comp as a plan, which would not be advisable, by the way, you don't adopt it. You're still required to update your code requirements to allow for the housing at the needed. And you have until, I believe it's June 2025, to make those adjustments to your code. And so this analysis assumes that you would go forward in doing that because it is required estate law. You really don't have a choice. So we had to assume that that.
Okay, thank you. Do we have any? Do either of you have any questions? Okay. Councilmember Hall.
Sorry. I had kind of similar questions to like what you started with. So so council doesn't adopt the DEIS, is that? Okay, so I guess I'm struggling to understand what the policy, what our role is.
The role with this was primarily just to update you on what we found with the analysis with the draft EIS to show that when going through the the analysis of the three different growth alternatives, we didn't find a need for any policy changes because everything that we have zoned for and planned for is already accommodated, even with the expanded growth options that was analyzed under the DEIS. So the role is it's primarily just a supplementary analysis document to the comprehensive.
And then can you also talk about how during the public comment period, how comments are addressed?
In the issuance of the final EIS, we'll be addressing all comments that we receive as part of the draft EIS and making any changes and address and calling those out if if changes are warranted.
So is it similar to the the public comment matrix that we put together in terms of like this was this was good feedback, we incorporated this, this we thought was accomplished in this way already, so on and so forth?
Yes, it'll be very similar.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. Not not seeing any questions. Okay. Then we will go to public comment. I will check in if there are any members of the public that would like to make comment on this item. Connie, welcome back.
So again, many comprehensive plans later, we have for many years had comprehensive plans that don't really guide us. We get to pick and choose whatever we want and we use the language in the comprehensive plan to support whatever it is that we want because there is no focus. And so while we have near-term focus in the strategic plan and some of our other functional plans, there's the linkage getting us from comp plan to reality never works. My brain's scrunched when, when Stephen said we are going to have better linkage from comp plan to code. And I'm going, well, wait a second, that isn't actually our pathway. Our pathway is through our functional plans and then we narrow down where we want to go through our strategic plans. So given the sky is the limit of our typical comprehensive plan, I would highly encourage trying to whittle it down for more focus for what we want for the city in 20 years. Because we found that 20 years isn't really all that far, especially when we're looking at transportation. And so if you looked at the DEIS and you looked at the project list that they say we need to achieve in order to get our level of service D for transportation for alternative three, you will see that that is our future project list that has never been through that criteria and that analysis to be in the TIP. So it is irrespective of climate, environment, or all of these different things that we pick and choose to prioritize our transportation projects. And then I'm going to use the R word, and the R word is reality. If we think that we are going to achieve that list of projects, we are out of our minds because there is just simply no way that those projects will happen and light rail. Right? So what I would suggest is look at the level of services that are in this draft EIS and scan them through the financial realities of life and say self, wow, what does this really mean Issaquah can be and should be given 20 years? And then gel down on a focus of what we can do and what can happen. And right now it's fiction and fiction really doesn't help. And it's not going to help us plan and it'll be another document on the shelf. So I mean, we, we, we don't have more than $200 million to spend just on transportation. Parks Department is looking at $28 million for two pedestrian crossings on each side of I-90. If we're looking at all these projects, we should have a lid. But we don't have those conversations and we need to have them before you do a DEIS. They just had not occurred as they should have as we have built this comprehensive plan. So I think, I think if we want a good comprehensive plan, you're going to have to have them. And if you want a comprehensive plan that's like all the rest of, that we've had where we pick and choose whatever we want, go forth and conquer, but it won't help.
Thank you, Connie. Burke Gieser, is there any members of the public online that might want to comment?
We do know how, have a few members of the public with us online, but I don't see that either of them are indicating a desire to speak at this time.
Okay. One minute just to see. Okay. I will mention we can be reached with email at any time as well, if, if you would like to comment on this or other council business. And we don't have any specific, I believe, we don't have any specific questions that we are being asked to address, but we can provide feedback. And I think specifically, one of the things that we could provide feedback on are the alternatives. We previously in this committee did suggest alternatives for the EIS and, and so we could provide feedback on that if we would like. Council President Walsh.
Yeah, thank you. Yeah, I still struggle with this idea of creating alternatives without solidifying on what gets us. So if you think about, okay, what's our goal? Our goal is to be able to get around town, to have livability, to have housing, you know, all of those things. And when we, when we look at the matrix of how do we accomplish those things, like yes, technically, we have the capacity, even if we don't do anything with a comprehensive plan because we upzoned in order to create the central Issaquah plan. So yes, technically, we have the capacity there, but the reality of does that accomplish our goals is still missing with this. So I'm still struggling with this idea of creating one alternative which spreads the peanut butter where we know that doing so is going to be financially imprudent versus having an area with more density that serves more people with infrastructure that can pay for itself. Because there's enough tax revenue from having multifamily housing. So how do I get through that struggle recognizing that if we don't adopt, you know, an alternative, we're potentially just kicking the ball down the road? Getting the can down the road, I guess the phrase is, related to our financial security as a city, let alone what we envision for our community. Big question.
Mandy, do you have thoughts in terms of how we address with the final EIS? Are there implications with the city choosing a preferred alternative with this draft EIS?
Do you want me to weigh in at all?
Yeah, please.
Okay. There's a little bit of a, of a challenge in that your zoning would allow growth to happen in either manner. And so I do think that, you know, you could show a leaning towards policy that focuses growth in central Issaquah and you know, that the city will continue to support that growth, invest in that area for growth. And then when growth happens outside of that, that area, such as the villages, those projects would need to be, you know, really evaluated to see how they're covering their own costs and needs for the growth to happen. So I don't know that you can say, no, you can't grow in the villages, but I think you can advocate for policies and growth and support investments in central Issaquah to try to focus more growth there, if that makes sense, to try to catalyze, incentivize growth now from there.
So maybe my question is, is it possible to have two alternatives in an EIS and have policy language which indicates, you know, more of a desire for centralization and things like that? Is, is that the way to accomplish it? If there is a concept of, okay, we're, we're fine legally. We've met all of our needs with our current zoning and such. And so the EIS covers the requirements and understands what the implications environmentally would be. So is, is the best way to accomplish that focus then through policy? Even if we don't have a chosen alternative?
Well, in the, the draft, the draft comprehensive plan, we actually have multiple policies that call out prioritizing investments in central Issaquah. So I think we make that preference already within the policies in the draft comprehensive plan. The way we see a lot of the draft EIS telling us is in the full buildout of what central Issaquah imagined in that SEPA process, that was a much higher growth alternative that was analyzed within that SEPA process that we're not getting to in this. And what we're showing with this is we don't need, actually, it's not so much that we need more projects to get to that growth. These different alternatives are showing us the projects we don't need to get to those different levels of growth. So at the lower growth alternatives, there's a series of projects that we don't need to invest in that shows a lower investment need from the city. So getting to your financial point of what the city is going to need to invest in. The alternative two doesn't need the same level of investment as alternative three. And so it shows us what those differences in investments would be for the different topic areas. So that's at least a lot of the information we got from the draft EIS, more so than if a preferred alternative might be able to benefit us through this EIS analysis.
Can you remind me, this is going to, is this going to PPC or this is going?
PPC did get a presentation on the, the full draft EIS last month.
Okay.
And then the, or in July, and then they're having the public hearing on the draft EIS this Thursday.
Okay. One, one thing that I think would be helpful, if it's possible, for that review and maybe also for the public is the, the chart with the different summary, you know, the housing impacts and the environmental impacts and where it says that alternative three is more efficient. Most of that is not providing additional information about the differences between the alternatives. There is a lot more information in the actual draft EIS document. And so I wondered if those could be, you know, if differences could be pulled out a little bit there. For example, the, the housing, you know, would this meet our affordable housing needs under the three alternatives? I think it's, I think, saying that we would meet them because we would have to comply with, with the law. You know, I think that just explaining that this is the one that would meet our, would better meet our stated policies elsewhere and our housing strategy, et cetera, so that you can differentiate between the different alternatives. And I think, I think the language and the explanation of the differences is in there, but it's not in a kind of condensed digestible format like that table could be if it had a little bit more information. I, I too sort of struggle with the, the concept overall. We do have a central Issaquah plan where we and a, a regional growth center. So we have plans and policies in place setting us down a track where we are planning for and incentivizing growth in the urban core. And so having, having this analysis of a policy or a future in which we don't even adopt this current plan, which while I understand it's required, you know, is not particularly helpful. So then we look at the other two and one does seem much more, alternative three seems more aligned with our current policies and, and planning. So it seems to me like focusing on the impacts of that one, when we review the comp plan for consistency is maybe, is maybe the way to think about this, but I, I agree with Council President Walsh that it's, it's confusing to try to consider this particular element somewhat on its own. Do we have any other feedback on this? Council President Walsh.
Yeah, I really appreciated the analysis of what portion of our land could have like the additional ADU or that would meet with, I think it was 1220 or 1110. Like the, the concept of we're not looking at all of our property and saying, you know, 5% of them are going to have the potential for an ADU. So I really thought that set of maps that kind of looked at it created more confidence in me of, oh, okay. So what we're looking at isn't a scenario where we necessarily see this everywhere. So I just wanted to at least call that out and say that was really helpful for me in looking at kind of the data and the possibility behind the alternatives considering the state changes.
Do you have any additional feedback on this item? Okay. So I think in summary, it's, it's a difficult, it's difficult to assess on its own. So perhaps explaining more about the implications of the different, the different alternatives. And I, I do think that that language is in the draft EIS if you look at the mitigation measures, but there's a lot of other information throughout. So if those were pulled out for the public, I think that would help in, in differentiating the different items. I do think alternative three is the one that is currently most aligned with our existing policies. And so as we review the comprehensive plan, I think we can make sure that that's, that the implications of that alternative in particular are, are reflected. And I, did I miss any of your comments, Council President Walsh, that you would like, liked it? Okay. So I think that's our comments. Do you have what you need for this item?
We do, thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you. And thank you, Mandy, as well. So that concludes our second item. Do we have any announcements? All right. That was our second of two items then. So there being no further business, this meeting is concluded at 7:58 PM. Thank you. Good evening.